James.
Welcome to the Bothell City Council meeting on Tuesday, June 11th. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, all council members are present except the mayor, who has gone home for a family emergency, and council member Olson, who should be here shortly. Meeting agenda. I guess there's nothing to pull, so anyone want to make a motion to approve the agenda? Motion made by council member McAuliffe, seconded by council member Agnew. Please raise your hands. Motion passes unanimously with council member Olson and Mary absent and excused. This is your comments. Do we have any? This is your comments? No. Okay, this is getting going fast. Okay, AB 19097, study session on parks, recreation, and open space pros plan update for 2020 through 2026.
Good evening, Deputy Mary and Council. Thank you for having me this evening. I'm Tracy with the Parks and Recreation Department, and I'm joined by Steve Dew, Principal with Conservation Techniques. He's our consultant who's assisting us on this project. So, we have a fairly lengthy presentation this evening to give you a good bit of background on our parks, our recreation program, some past history on the 2014 plan, and then Steve is going to walk you through our current process, and then a visioning goals exercise where we really want to hear your thoughts. Along the way, if you have any questions, just sort of signal, and either Steve or I will stop and be able to respond to you. So, that's right, I have to remember to use this and talk at the same time. All right, so briefly, you've seen this before when I gave you the staff briefing. Just sort of a quick overview of a pros plan. I like to break it down into these four areas to make it a little more digestible. It covers the where are we now, where do we want to be, how do we get there, and then ultimately into the plan creation and adoption. And tonight, we're really focusing on the where are we now and the where do we want to be. And then come autumn and the wintertime later this calendar year, we're going to be focusing on the how do we get there? That's really that priority setting and funding questions. And then moving into the plan, adoption, and creation. And Steve's going to talk a little more about our specific timeline when he gets to that section. So, our plan this year in the 2019 plan is officially an update, meaning we're not starting from scratch. So, we're going to be basically rebuilding, revising, eliminating some things, changing from this huge document of the 2014 plan. And so, I'm just going to give a brief overview of it because that's our baseline, and that's what we're using as our initial guide. But as we talked about earlier, one of our goals of the 2019 plan is to make it more realistic and a little less aspirational. And so, I'm just going to spend again a few minutes on it. So, five goals were created, pardon me, were created as part of the 2014 plan, and they are to provide a parks and recreation system that will meet the needs and improve the quality of life for the citizens of Bothell; to promote a range of recreational opportunities and provide local recreation programming, which complement services offered by other agencies in the city; to maintain and operate a park system to a level and quality that will enhance and promote Bothell's unique character; to conserve, enhance, and acquire open space, natural areas, and wildlife habitat; and finally, to acquire and develop land for active park and recreation facilities with a focus in the Snohomish County portion of the city. Now, this was a very, very ambitious plan when it was put together. In addition to these five goals, it was laid out 25 different priorities and 68 detailed action items, all to be covered in approximately a five-year period. And don't worry, I'm not going to be keeping us here till midnight and go through all of those. So, again, it was a very, very ambitious plan, but it also broke out a few priority projects. And so, here's the projects that they put in the plan. And one of the things that was interesting about them is they didn't rank those priority projects. They said, "These are a priority in no particular order." And so, some of the projects are partially completed, such as Horse Creek Plaza, which is listed up there as the half-acre open space development; East Norway Hill and North Creek Forest. Using the most conservative dollar amounts, this entire plan, if we were to have implemented it, between $50 and $58 million, right? It's a massive sum of money. And what that doesn't cover is really cool opportunities when they come up that we just have to take advantage of, like the acquisition of the former Wayne Golf Course. So, as we begin thinking about our transition from where we were when we put this plan together in 2014 to where we want to be as we put the plan together in 2019, I want to talk very briefly about some general statistics about Bothell, where we've come from over the last 19 years, and how that could change or impact some of the overall plan recommendations. And by the way, I pulled these numbers from the U.S. Census and also from our CAFER, our Consolidated Annual Financial Report, in case you want to know where I got them. So, over the last 17 years, our population has increased 51%. So, we've gone from 30,000 people to just over 45,000 people. Our median income has also increased 51%. And the number of 19- to 64-year-olds at or below the poverty line has increased by 40%. So, that's our largest gap there. This is the chart in the middle here that I'm referring to now. Our population that's over 65 who live below the poverty line, that's increased by 16%. And children under the age of 18 has decreased by 35%. This here were some of the statistics that I found to be particularly interesting. And when I presented this information to the Parks and Recreation Board last month, they had a very robust discussion over. And that is the fact that languages other than English, which are spoken at home, have increased by 100% in the last 17 years. And so, I think that as we move into the second portion of this phase, the how do we get there and sort of the plan creation, I suspect that we may come back to some of this information as we explore some ideas around social equity and diversity in the community. And finally, and there's a typo on this slide, and I apologize. With several large land acquisitions, the North Creek Forest and the former Wayne Golf Course, our open space acres have increased 112%. In the year 2000, we had 188 acres of parks and open space. And in 2019, that should say 403 acres. So, my apologies for that typo there. So, now, I want to move us into really where we are now with an overview of our current parks and our recreation opportunities, our classes, and our current events. One of the things that Nick and I noticed as we went out and began to do a little bit of community engagement and community education was that people don't really know what's in our parks and what kind of recreation offerings we had. I would ask, "Who knows if we have this amenity?" And very few hands would go up. So, I hope that this information is helpful for you. Generally speaking, with parks, we have 403 acres of parks and open space land. Of those 403 acres, 141 acres are urban forest, 5 acres are cemeteries, we have two cemeteries; 28 acres are dedicated to sports fields, those are both artificial turf and grass. That means we have 230 acres that are passive use only, and about 168 which are active use. One of the things to know with those is not all of our parks are just active or just passive. So, for example, Cedar Grove Park, some of the parcels are passive, some of the parcels are active. And if you're looking for more detailed information on that, I can get it for you and provide it after this meeting. We also maintain, just as staff, 3.6 miles of regional trails. And so, that's like the West Riverside Trail, the Victoria Trail, and areas like that. And so, delving a little deeper into that parkland, into particularly the active space, we have 11 parks that have barbecues and picnic tables. We have 14 playgrounds and four rentable picnic shelters. We have eight restrooms, but more importantly, 31 stalls. So, that's a, I mentioned that just because it's a lot of work that our staff has to do in terms of cleaning, maintaining, and stocking. And sometimes when you hear eight restrooms, you may just think eight stalls, but many of them have multiple stalls. Then we also have, you know, the artificial and grass fields, which are used for a number of different sports. The map turned out really fuzzy on this slide, but there's a big one over in the back. The other thing that we've done as a result of some of this community engagement is put together a map that shows the different amenities and which park they are. So, if someone says, "Hey, I'm looking for a horseshoe pit," they know to go to Blythe Park. So, some of our other amenities that we have, three of our parks have water access. So, if you're looking to get into the Snohomish River, you can do that there. We have six combination basketball pickleball courts. Pickleball's all the rage. We have a disc golf course horseshoe pit. And then two rental facilities, and obviously, I haven't read all of these that are on these slides, but we have the North Creek Schoolhouse, which can hold up to 35 occupants, and the Lidle House, which can hold up to 70 occupants. The two things, the thing to know about those facilities, while we use them for rentals, family reunions, weddings, business meetings, holiday parties, we also do our recreation programming there. We do rent out some space from the North Shore School District, but we're also hosting a lot of art classes and exercise classes in the Lidle House. So, delving a little deeper into numbers, and I apologize, I'm about to give you a lot of numbers over the next couple of minutes. I want to take a look at some trends in our recreation, and specifically, those are our classes and camps. One thing I will say about this information is taking a deep look back is challenging. We lost a lot of our data when we converted from our old system to our new system called Blue Rec. And so, really, we're working with about a year and a half worth of data to be able to go back and take a look at classes and trends. The other thing that I'd like to remind you of is for our recreation programming, we use a contract model. So, we have one recreation coordinator, and she is essentially a contract manager. And so, we are paying a percentage to the zumba teacher or to the sports camp or to whatever that is. We're not actually providing those services ourselves with city staff. Our adult softball league is incredibly, incredibly popular. On average, we have 90 teams, and that's men's teams and adults' teams. And the other real strong highlight are the children's camps. So, Skyhawks and Kids Love Soccer are our most popular recreation offering. So, in 2018, during that summer season, over 1,000 kids attended those programs, which is pretty incredible. We also, though, had a few low points as part of recreation classes and offerings. In 2018, 16% of our classes were canceled due to low registration. And thus far, year-to-date, in 2019, the first two quarters of the year, little over 23% were canceled due to low registration. And we also offered fewer classes this year than we did last year, right? So, we're offering fewer and we're canceling more. So, that's something that we're taking a look at and going to be monitoring through the year, but also want to hear from you in terms of where this ranks, in terms of an overall priority as part of the pros plan, when we get to Steve's session. So, still more data for you as I delve a little bit more into adult recreation. And I've broken this out into adult exercise classes and then enrichment classes, and I'll explain that in a second. So, for our adult exercise classes, again, this is a contract model. In 2018, 75% was going to the instructor, and 25% was going to the city. We changed that in 2019. And that's because by the time we pay for staff and Blue Rec and the bridge and staff time, they're not, this isn't really a huge sort of return on investment there. But in 2018, our classes peaked at 24 registrants in August for the Cardio Jam class. So, that's actually right there. And the one thing that I want to say about these numbers is that a registration is exactly that. So, it could be that I've registered for the entire session. I'm taking Cardio Jam every week for eight weeks. I could also buy a drop-in pass, so it's a single-class option. If I buy two drop-in classes for Cardio Jam, I bought two drop-in classes in August. That means I'm two of those 24. The only way to actually get down sort of deep into the data and figure out how often that happens is to review on a class-by-class basis and take a look at everybody's name. I spoke with our rec coordinator, and she said that doesn't happen very often, but I want you to be aware of what these numbers are, especially since we're not talking about a whole lot of people. Most of our classes are in the four to seven individuals per month range. And the one thing about these classes is they're offered by the YMCA and also by private businesses in town. And you'll see that in 2018, our average registrants per class was eight. It did increase this year in the first two quarters of 2019. Our largest group here was 27, also for Cardio Jam, so a very popular class. And classes here ranged from four to 27. And they are higher, because again, our average group size is 10. But one of the things that we're not sure of is, is that because the YMCA is temporary offering, temporarily offering less classes? These are the same instructors that the YMCA uses as we use. I'm just going through the song in my head. And so, is it that because they can't get them at the Y, they're coming here? Or is this increased attendance as part of our class? That's something that we're going to be looking at over the course of this year. And if these classes are offered in 2020, that's another trend that we'll be looking at. Moving into enrichment classes, there was a huge demand for our safety classes. So, CPR, first aid, as well as boating safety classes. Our CPR classes and first aid classes do max out at 10. So, when you look over here at the chart, you'll see that for most classes, we were in the seven, eight, nine, or 10 range. Our boating safety classes had nine per class. And interestingly enough, when we get into the stats on kids' enrichment classes, the Home Alone and Safe Sitters class also had really high attendance. So, that's a very interesting trend. Our adult art classes averaged eight per class, but as you can see down here, those numbers really varied. We were hosting classes with as few as five people and sort of peaking out at 11. And these could be like a paint and sip kind of class, you know, where you're painting and eating at the same time or drinking. Or they could be a more traditional art class, like a pastel or a charcoal art class. In addition, we contract with an outside agency for online class registrations. 26 of those were taken for these online classes in the entire calendar year of 2018. So, I alluded to this just a moment ago about kids' enrichment. And so, these are both classes and camps. We had 324 kids go through our enrichment and camp, summer camp programs in 2018. And again, our safety classes, those Home Alone and Safe Sitters, were by far the most popular class offerings. The art classes sometimes operated with as few as two people and maxed out at six. And so, those were definitely not well-attended. And then parent and me, so mommy and me, daddy and me, they averaged just about 12. That would be a parent and a child, so in total, 24 participating in those classes. And those are generally music classes. Our non-sports summer camps for kids averaged just under 13 per session. And again, this is our highlight, those youth sports programs. So, these are just the shining spot as part of their recreation. And this is two organizations, this is Kids Love Soccer and the Skyhawks Program. It too is the same contract model that I spoke about earlier with now a 70-30 split. And these kids are the reason for this huge jump in registrations because last year, for example, the Skyhawks, 586 kids participated in their programs over the summer. And so, I think that's pretty exciting. And very quickly, adult softball, extraordinarily popular, 91 teams in 2018 and 87 teams in 2019. Finally, just a little bit of context around our community events. These are very well-attended. Some of the music in the park or the kids' concerts, you know, dropping down to about 300 attendees or 175 attendees. Weather and the choice of band really does make a big difference, but it's largely weather. If it's too hot or if we get a little bit of summer rain, they definitely impact the number. The Blythe Park Campout, that's 20 families per campout. We hold two campouts a year. That is sold out within just a day or so of an opening. And so, that's really a very, very popular event. I spoke with our new volunteer coordinator, and she anticipates bringing on some new volunteer events in early part of 2020 and taking a look at Martin Luther King Day. But again, you know, we do Arbor Day, Veterans Day, Safe Halloween. I had trouble counting that one. In the end, I thought, "How many pieces of candy did we give out? That's probably sort of a good sort of baseline." So, I hope that I've given you a lot to think about. It has really given you a 20,000-foot view of Parks and Rec and to begin to think about and process that information as we move forward for the 2019 plan update. I'm going to pass it over to Steve, who's going to walk you through the plan process and lead a discussion on your vision, values, and needs. And then this information is going to be combined with the survey results, the community engagements that Steve is going to talk about, and then with the Parks Board's assistance and a second council study session in autumn. I know you thought you were getting done with me. We're going to go through and craft our priorities, our goals, so that we can create a revised, usable, better plan for 2019.
All right, thank you, Tracy. Good evening, members of council. Again, my name is Steve Dew with Conservation Techniques, and my firm is helping lead the effort with the city on the update to your Parks Recreation Open Space Plan. What I've got tonight is picking up where Tracy left off, which is, where do we go now? So, I'll walk you through a little bit about who we are, talk a little bit about the project timeline and the pieces of the puzzle that make up the Parks Recreation Open Space Plan, and then end on a series of questions, which is really the purpose of tonight's session, is to get your feedback on a set of questions to give guidance to the project, give guidance to us about where you'd like to see the city go with parks, recreation, open space, trails, et cetera. So, to begin, the project team is two firms, my firm, Conservation Techniques, and we will take the lead on all of the park and recreation planning and a lot of the community engagement that goes into it, as well as the policy discussions and coordinating with staff. On the team, we also have Stepherson and Associates Communications. They're out of Seattle, they're a public involvement firm, and they focus almost exclusively on public process and public involvement for municipalities. So, they're a great asset to the team, and they'll be helping to do events in the community, attend community meetings, and help make a very strong community engagement plan for the project. Just in terms of our overall skill set, we're, my firm's Conservation Techniques, again, is a specialized firm in parks, recreation, open space planning. It's about 90% of our work. So, we do work just like this for communities across the Puget Sound and up and down the West Coast. So, you know, we take a very dedicated perspective in working with staff and looking at how the city is working, where it needs to go, and what kinds of goals or policy tweaks might need to happen to make your system improve for your community. All of our plans are really locally driven. So, we listen to the community, and we build a plan around what the community interests and needs are. And just as a side note, all of my staff are also former public sector park planners. So, we know what it's like to be in Tracy's shoes and be on that side of the table and have a sense of what it means to implement projects in terms of putting projects from pencil to turning dirt, looking for grant money, looking for partnerships, and all of the rest. So, we build as much of that into our plans as we can to make it really a strong guide for you. So, high-level nutshell, what is the pros plan, the Parks Recreation Open Space Plan? Really, it's intended to be a six-year strategic plan to give you guidance on how to plan for and manage your parks, your open spaces, your trails, your programs, and all of those recreation opportunities for Bothell residents. It's intended to be, again, a policy and strategic guide. Again, it will link to the comprehensive plan, it will have goals and policies built in, but it will also have a specific project list, a capital improvement plan, that will be prioritized and will also be strategic in nature. So, you can see this project list and see in time and sequence, projects costed out over time with ideas about how to fund those different projects. And it's also structured, so you can see how it relates to community priorities that we've heard through the process. Like the 2014 plan, it's also a technical study, so it's going to have a lot of numbers in it, like Tracy just walked through. It will also include a detailed analysis of your existing park system and your trail infrastructure. We'll look at programs, and we'll look at the numbers that go into the programs. So, we'll have a strong foundation of background information that staff can then rely on as you move forward in implementing. And lastly, the plan hopefully will be a tool for communicating with your residents where the city is, where it wants to go, and how to get there. So, we will try to make a very reader-friendly, graphic sort of plan that is easy to look at, easy to pick up, and not too burdensome. So, that's where we're heading. In terms of putting the plan together, like many other citywide plans that come across at city council, whether it's a comprehensive plan or a stormwater plan or others, you know, there's a lot of steps to go into it. For our plans, project rounding is an important first step where we do a kickoff meeting with staff. We really try to understand current issues, current challenges, and things that are on the table for the community today. Then we get into kind of the field work, which is the parks assessments, the trails review, the looking at the programs and the other opportunities that you have through either partnerships or other organizations like the Y that are here serving the community. Community engagements are very important and a large part of the project in that we will make efforts to reach out to the community in a lot of different ways. Tracy already highlighted a couple of them, including the survey and community pop-up events, and I'll touch on the rest of them here shortly. But just know that community engagement is really critical to how we see this project, and it's important in the sense that we will value and integrate that feedback that we get from the community into the plan. So, as we listen to what the residents are saying and what your stakeholders and partners are saying, we'll work through a series of needs assessments. We'll probably break those down between major topic areas. So, we'll have an assessment of parks and open space, an assessment about recreation programs, an assessment about trails, and keep it kind of topical. And the intent there is to outline where you are, where you want to go, core goals and strategies to move through those things, ultimately leading to a project list that I've already referenced, and then implementation and strategic ideas about how to make these projects come to life. Knowing that resources are limited, we'll also be looking at ideas for things related to partnerships and grants and other non-general fund opportunities that might exist, as well as looking at other funding tools that might be available for the city for other projects that might be large-ticket items hypothetically. Ultimately, it's a planned document, and it's a planned process. So, we will work it through as a process. So, we'll work with the Parks Board and come back through city council at different points throughout the project, just to make sure you're aware of where we're going, as well as have a document that's reviewed by you before you need to adopt it. In terms of the project timeline, it's about a 12-month project. And the hard and fast deadline really is a March 1 submittal to the Recreation and Conservation Office, it's the RCO. It's the agency that organizes the state's recreation grants. So, backing up from that, the intent is to have a very near-final draft for city council review by the end of this calendar year. So, you can review it, think it through, chew on it. We can work through amendments and additions and then have it ready to go for council adoption before that March deadline. But backing up from that, you can see how the different elements of the plan process kind of go in step with what I've just talked about in terms of those different elements. On the lower half, I tried to overlay the intended community involvement aspects to the project. So, community survey is currently ongoing. There's two pieces to it, there's a mail survey and an online survey that's open to the whole community, and that's active right now. The mail surveys went out last week, and some of you may have seen that. But we'll be also asking for you to help promote that at some point soon to make sure that, again, we hear from everybody. And then there's a whole series of community events, pop-up events, where we will have either our team or city staff attend to get information from folks at places they're already gathering. So, city events and things like that. And again, I'll go through that list in a moment. But again, there's also a series of stakeholder discussions that we're doing that are both some group-based stakeholders discussions, as well as one-on-one conversations. And then online engagement will run the course of the project, and that will rely primarily on the city's website and the project page that's set up for this, as well as postings to Facebook and other social media to keep the... to keep the concept of the project alive in the public. This is a more detailed review of the timeline. And here, it really just tries to, again, show the overlap between the various major steps of the project, like, whoop, sorry, wrong button, like the inventory assessment and needs assessment lining up with a bulk of the community outreach. Here, I'll just reference that, again, the bulk of the community outreach is going to be occurring between now and early September. So come early fall, we're in the process of putting really strong ideas and recommendations together so we can come back to the community and say, did we get it right? Are we on the right track? Give us a little more guidance before going to develop a more defined plan draft. In terms of community engagement, I've already touched on the various elements of the engagement process, but this slide really just highlights those. So again, board discussions, council discussions, the survey, different sessions with stakeholders, community meetings, and those are of different forms. They're both a more traditional community meeting as well as these pop-up events that we're going to, which are the outreach at the community events and the online engagement. So we're just trying to be as thorough and thoughtful and transparent as possible during the process and listen to as many people as we can. So in terms of community engagement, you can see this is a start of a list of events where we will have a presence, where we'll have some display materials, some exercises for folks to use dots, to give us priorities, to write notes on sticky notes, et cetera, to just start to collect information from the community. And the list goes on. And there are probably more planned than this. So again, you can start to see the breadth of engagement or trying to reach out, again, to those places where folks are already coming together, capture them while they're there in some sense, and get their feedback to benefit the project. So in terms of what we've done to date, and granted, we've only been working on the project for six, eight weeks, something like that. We're off to a really strong start. So obviously, we've done our kickoff meeting, and we've talked to the Parks Board, Park and Recreation Board. But we've also put together a detailed public involvement plan that outlines the various steps for engaging the public. We've launched the community survey and attended one of the pop-up sessions last weekend. And we've also completed our park assessments as well. And there's a project website up, and the project has been branded with a logo that you see on screen. Moving forward, we will continue our efforts to gather more information by doing stakeholder discussions, continuing through that list of pop-up events, hosting that community open house later in the year, as well as doing our analytical work on our end to do the needs assessments, to do mapping and graphic analysis, and then come back to City Council later in the year to let you know where we've gone, what we've heard from the community, and where we might go with the plan and get your guidance at that point. So that's a really quick overview of the process and where we'll be going. And at this point, I really want to turn it back to you to get your feedback on your thoughts about parks and recreation, the services that the city offers, where you want to go. So I put up just one initial question just to get things rolling here, and that's just, you know, imagine Bothell in 2025, and, you know, what do you see happening with regard to active park space, with regard to trail connections, with regard to recreation programs? You know, building off some of the data that Tracy offered, where do you envision the city being six years from now? And this is where it becomes a discussion. I'll turn it back to Deputy Mayor.
Who wants to go first? Come on. Councilmember Zorn's. I'm going to blow my wad on questions, and then I'll be like, God, I should have asked. One, a lot of those community surveys can't be purely scientific. And so I'm sitting there trying to second guess, how do you handle the multiple repeat visitors who keep putting the stickers? So there's that question. And then the second question is, I did notice, you know, varied areas that you're planning on hitting, which is good planning. And it occurred to me, maybe there's rules why we can't do this. But could we do a pop-up, like, a place that gets really trafficked, like in a parking lot, like where people go and to do their grocery shopping on a weekend? Or, you know, get permission from, you know, the owners? Like, could we set up a little stand here just to survey people, flag them? I don't know if that would be productive or not, but anyway.
Those are great questions. And on the pop-up question, I think we can work out an arrangement. We've done that on other projects where we've basically stood in front of a grocery store. And, you know, it worked. You get good feedback. And on the survey, let me just highlight the process for the survey, because I kind of glossed over that a little bit. The survey is a two-pronged survey. So there is a mail-based survey that is intended to be the statistical version. So the mail survey went out to a random sample of 2,500 households across the city. So of that, those responses will be isolated from the broader online community survey that is the identical survey, but it's just open and available for everyone to take. So we'll have essentially two data sets. So we'll have the statistical data set, and we'll have the general population data set. So in all, we'll have a lot of responses, but we can also compare between the two.
And if I might add, it's a little bit of an honor system. We are asking people as we put out the message that you reply once, and we hope that people keep to that.
Don't worry. Who else would like to ask questions? You're going to make me go? Okay, Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So I had a couple of questions back, Tracy, when you were talking. There was quite a few. You had mentioned camps that were canceled. Is that due to just other things happening in our community? Or is there something specific we can put our finger on that?
So they're canceled due to low enrollment. What we don't have a handle on is, is it interest? Is it competing opportunities? Are they in opportune times? Right now, what we know is that people aren't registering for them. The number, though, of children's activities that are canceled are much, much lower than the number of adult geared activities. That's really where the cancellations are. And we also find that, you know, so let's say we have, you know, two or three soccer clinics, you know? Maybe one of those needs to be canceled, note the air quotes, due to low registration, but we're able to move those children into a different time slot. It's really the adult classes where we're seeing that low enrollment.
And do we, when we talk about the first aid and CPR classes that we offer, is that something that the community pays for? Like, is it, how does that put on?
Yes, yes, the community pays for them.
Okay, so they're individual classes that community members can sign up for and take?
Yes.
Through our Parks and Rec? Okay. I think you mentioned something about a Martin Luther King Day. Just real quick, what was that?
So when I spoke with Shelby Croak, our new volunteer coordinator, and asked her when we could anticipate formal volunteer events beginning, she suggested Martin Luther King Day of 2020.
Okay, all right, great. And then the, I want to get to the survey a little bit. So you had mentioned 2,500 surveys were going to go out? Is that accurate? And those are just random surveys throughout the city, correct?
Yes, those were random addresses of residential properties.
Okay, so would we have a sample set to tell how many were in King County versus Snohomish County?
We have the data set that includes zip codes, so we can split it by zip code.
Okay, and then would there be a data set that would help us determine how many of those have kids? How many of those are seniors? How many low income? I mean, do we have any of that type of?
Actually, yeah. During, as part of the survey, there are three demographic questions. One is, how many kids under 18 live in your household? One is, what's your age? And it's age groups. And then the other is, in what part of the city do you live? And there's a map, and it's, I think, four quadrants. So they can identify by looking at the map where they live to represent that information on the survey.
Fabulous, okay. And then there was a slide that was showing, the first slide that was showing the locations where I think you were going to take some additional surveying. Yes, there was two slides. So these locations, are you doing this on days when there's a lot of people coming out? Or how would that work at these locations? Why, I guess, why these days at these locations?
So we tried to choose events where we thought that there would be a lot of people. Some of it, though, is hit or miss. So for example, last Saturday, I was out at the sports fields, and there were tournaments of girls softball and Little League going on. And, yeah, I think we talked with five people, and sometimes that happens. But for example, the music in the park, we chose country music that's very popular, particularly among younger people. And we're trying to take a look at how we can get different, all kinds of diversity in the community, so different age ranges, people with kids, people without kids. For our Just Kidding Around concert, we selected Kaspar Baby Pants because he had the largest showing last year. So, and then for Friday in the markets, some of it is also just sort of what works in schedules. I'll be perfectly honest with you. We're grateful that we can go to the Friday market, and those were the two Fridays that worked in my schedule. So some of that is coincidence, and then some of it, we really tried to target large events where we knew that there would be individuals. On this page here, some of the events that have already occurred, we've really tried to take a look at different communities. So for example, I was at the Canyon Park Subarea Plan Meeting to try and reach out to some of our businesses. And likewise, have also did a city update at the chamber meeting. University of Washington at Bothell was incredibly gracious to us as part of their engagement program. And they let me teach part of a class and work with a group of their students as one of their sustainability class, and then go into their residence halls, which was, Nick was there with me, was an incredibly successful event, talking with 18- to 20-year-olds and what exactly they want and what kind of music they want. And yes, we fed them pizza and cookies. But it was really, it was a delightful group. We talked with about 26 young people in the course of just about two hours. So that's really what we're looking at. For the weekends, we're targeting our three largest, most popular parks. But I do love Councilmember Zorn's idea about hitting a grocery store or something similar and working some of those into our engagement schedule.
Yeah, that's fabulous. So it sounds to me like we're internally, we're the ones who are, there's a lot of work and time invested internally to do these surveys, right? Am I gathering that? That's how this is?
Go ahead, Steve.
Happening?
Well, I was just going to say that I would make a distinction between surveys and pop-up sessions, these events. So with the events, a lot of the events will be managed by staff, whereas the surveys will be analyzed and assessed by the consultant team. So we put the survey together. We put the survey out in the community. We'll do the data entry on the survey. We'll do the analysis on the survey for both the online and for the mail versions. But we're also balancing the project budget with the resources to hit as many different types of events and engagement opportunities as we can.
Great. And then just last question. Kind of spearheads around different members within our community, and that would be, do we have opportunities to, you know, meet with seniors within our community? Do we have opportunities to meet with youth in our communities, faith-based groups within our communities? Are we going out and reaching out to? Because you might get large groups of people, you know, maybe at the senior center, maybe at the, you know, faith-based group churches and things like that, and reaching out that way. Are we doing that as well?
So we've reached out to those groups in different ways. And so, for example, for our faith-based community, I've reached out to the leadership of the larger faith-based communities here in Bothell and asked them if they could share our survey or if I could bring paper surveys or perhaps there was some sort of event that I could attend. And I haven't received a huge response back. But we're still continuing some of those outreaches. And we have shared it with the senior center to share with their members. We're also reaching out into some of the different communities. So even within the sports community. So for example, our disc golf community, we sent them a link to the survey and asked them to share. The chamber, we asked them, you know, to share the link. So we're also in part relying on some of our friends and partners to help share the information and get the word out that we want to hear from all segments of the community and especially the folks that we don't typically hear from.
Great, thank you so much.
Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you. So there's a couple of things that I have that I'm thinking about here. First of all, do we compare if the YMCA offers this program or the senior center offers this program or Bothell offers this? Which, are we, we don't want to compete, but somehow or another, we don't want to, like, duplicate either. Do we kind of look at that whole idea of where people are going? And do we want, we don't want to compete, but we also don't want to duplicate?
Great question. As part of our assessment of recreation programs, we'll look at not only what the city offers and the pattern of participation, but we'll also look at the YMCA or any other regional provider to see what they are offering, to see if there are gaps, and to see if there's overlaps.
Right. And then also the cost as well for people. I kind of find it very interesting to go back to, let's see, community meetings in 2013. So what I'm looking at is, here's what the public said, and how much of this did we really accomplish? Because if we're going to make a plan, and it's going to go for six years, then we should look at what people asked for in 2013 and where we are today. So some of the things I think I just happened to look at and thought was interesting was a skate park reinstalled, teen ban venue. And I think we do have interpretive signage at the park at Bothell Landy, don't we? Did we do the interpretive signage? Nope, we didn't do it, okay. Fountain for multiple use, bike trail improvements near 228th. Connect North Creek Trail with the Trail in Mill Creek. Did we do that?
North Creek Phase 3 is done, and then Public Works is working on the Phase 4. I know the Public Works Director's back there. She can correct me if I'm wrong to facilitate that correction.
But I think what's important to me is if we are going to hear the community voice, then we need to rate ourselves and what we actually, what our plan is to move forward with that community voice.[1643.88] community voice. Because if I look at 2013, I'm gonna say, hmm, there are things that were asked for and we didn't do it. So, how do we make the plan become alive and be something that we monitor?
So, I would just say that that is sort of what we're looking at. A lot of the plan in 2013, 2014 was very aspirational. So, when we showed that first slide where we showed $58 million in projects, it's not really a reality. So, that's what we're trying to get at in this plan, try to make it a little bit more realistic, a little bit more achievable. We still can have some of those stretch goals and I think Tracy talked about that when she came and did her staff presentation. But we need to, you know, dial it back a little bit and then look at some things that we can really actually achieve in the next six to 10 years.
So, that's what we're actually gonna say. We're gonna hear the community voice and then we're gonna say back to them, this is what we will, we will plan to achieve in the next few years.
This is what we will, you know, attempt to achieve, yes. I mean, there's a lot of things that play into that, but we hope that it will be a very good guide for the community and for the staff to take forward and to, you know, press those ideas and see if we can make some of them actually come to fruition.
Okay. So, I guess my question then becomes, how does the community say, I really want this? And we say to them, there is a budget, there's, you know, some way that we can afford to do this. So now, this is what we are planning to do for, because you have said this. I mean, how do we communicate to them that we can't do it all?
So, that actually comes in the sessions that we're gonna do in autumn and early winter, right? Is that priority setting exercise of taking a look of the analytical information from the survey, some of the dot exercises, the information that we're getting from you, from the Parks Board, from the community engagement and the survey, and then basically overlaying that with what are the funding opportunities that Steve talked about? What are those grants? What are those different funding mechanisms? And coming to some sort of consensus about what those top project priorities are and can we achieve them? And so, that's the work that's still to come later on this year.
I really appreciate your questions because I had the same ones. My first question was, have you reviewed what we achieved from the last PROS plan? Sounds like we have. And then, do we typically have a set budget or is it all grants that we hope to get? Do we have a budget for the PROS plan at all?
So, there's a budget for Steve's work on this, but in terms of moving forward come autumn, what we'll be looking at or what are those key sort of top projects that have maybe risen to the top? What are those approximate and projected costs? And then take a look at some trends. How much, say, REIT money has Parks and Rec traditionally received and how much could we anticipate receiving in the future? What are some typical grant opportunities that are achievable? I mean, for example, I mean, I look at the grant that Public Works and Parks recently won for the bridge of the Park at Bothell Landing, you know. We were tied for fifth, so we were in the top eight projects. If they'd funded at the same level that they'd funded all the prior years, we wouldn't have gotten all the money, right? So, that means statewide, eight projects would have been funded in that category, right? This year, there were more. And so, those are what we're gonna have to look at as part of those projections and taking a look at our, you know, our capital facilities plan and basically doing some estimates and trying to figure that out. That's gonna be the hard work to come.
I appreciate that because I, one of the frustrations that I've had over the years is we tend to do a lot of master planning and those master plans sit on a shelf and oftentimes aren't realistic financially. And it's super frustrating to have spent the money on that, knowing that it's not going anywhere, particularly the Park at Bothell Landing, $16 million. When did we ever think we were gonna get $16 million to do that project? And so, I really appreciate the kind of practicality, I think, of your approach. I would certainly like to see a little more realistic plan going forward of what we could actually achieve and then actually achieve some of them. I mean, I look at like the skate park, $250,000. That actually seems really doable to me and we know it's something that's been asked for, for a long time. And so, I guess going forward, I hope that as a group, we're able to kind of really hone in on the ones that are achievable and give us the most bang for our buck.
Yeah, the only thing I'd like to say about these numbers is that these were the 2014 estimates.
Point taken. But it's probably not a million dollars. So, anyway, really appreciate your work. I look forward to the process and excited to see where we go with it. So, thank you. Did you have any? Councilmember Olson? Okay. Thank you so much, I guess.
Are these guys still some questions?
Oh, we have more. Okay.
Since we have your attention.
Well, why not, right?
And you've also just recently referenced the notion of budget and limitations. Let me get to this question. Maybe this will spark some ideas. So, there are always competing interests and projects that need different attention and different amounts of resources. But with regard to Parks and Recreation, over the next five years, do you have one or two top priority projects that you think are really critical or really important for this community to achieve? Knowing that we want to build this plan about, around the idea of being realistic, being pragmatic and being thoughtful and not overstretching. So, are there a couple of projects that any of you have on your lists that would be something to note?
Councilmember Agnew. I think one to two is really, really hard, but go for it.
A park in Snohomish County. We need to have a park up in Snohomish County. Those people don't have as much park space as I'd like to see them have. The other would be the master plan and the development of the formerly Wayne Golf Course and see what we can get up and running there. If we can get something to bring in some revenue, you know, let's look at that also.
Well, I think what my priorities would be, would be for community-based activities that where the community comes together and is joined in probably projects that include diversity so that we recognize the different diverse cultures that are in our city and celebrate those. So, I don't know, we used to do, was it River, River something?
River Fest.
River Fest. And people have often said in this document, oh, we want River Fest back. But if we're ever going to do anything and bring something back, we should, ought to bring something back, the community can all celebrate together, including the diversity that we have in our city. So, that's really taught for me. And the other one would be that we recognize, as we look through many of these things, that our students at high school, University of Washington and Cascadia really don't have a place to come to. They can't go downtown and afford the restaurants. There's no place that they can afford. They want some concerts that play to them or places to play them. As we're forming the Friday Night Market, Cascadia has come to us and the UDA Bothell as well and said, would you please go until 8:00 at night so we could have someplace for our young people to go and maybe a concert that they would enjoy? So, you know, we have to think about those age groups. We don't do a lot for them sometimes and we need to hear their voice. So, I'm trying really hard to get that survey to those young people.
Who wants to go next? Councilmember Zorn's.
I need to get in before other good ideas because those are some great ideas. I was going, I was going to say a water park and swings big enough to, for grownups to be on, but planning makes a lot of sense and bringing back some familiar events. I do have, can I rabbit trail on one question before I tell you what I think are the two things, projects that we need most? There was some discussion of interfacing with the school district. Is there still an idea of, is that for use of playfields, using fields or?
So, that's definitely something that we're very interested in. You know, I think there's a number of fields out there that the school district has that are vacant at times and there's an opportunity to partner with them. We're definitely gonna look at that.
Thank you. That's what I thought was being alluded to in our packet. So, if you were to say the two things that I think are most important to me, I'm going to say most important to the community, one is the skate park and the other is a dog park.
I'm gonna echo Councilmember Agnew's priority also for Snohomish County. Just looking through the GIS maps and everything that was, you know, in these packets, yeah, you notice a stark difference between park and open space in Snohomish County versus King County. And then, you know, the new park down at Wayne, just being able to activate that active space or being able to utilize that active space, I think would be advantageous just to, you know, there's a lot of just open space and people can walk through. But if we can be able to utilize that front little piece that we can actually do something and get some revenue and just generate traffic and community and connectivity there, I think that'd be great.
Gosh, this is so hard because everybody, I think everybody said what I would say. I agree about Snohomish County for sure and I think specifically, I would say, active field space in Snohomish County because we have the North Creek Fields down here and some other fields. But as far as I know, we don't really have active fields in Snohomish County. Does Doug Allen?
Yeah, so Cedar Park, or Cedar Grove, excuse me. Cedar Grove Park has a ball field that's multi-use.
But it's not turfed, right?
It is not turfed.
Yeah, so it's kind of not really used all year round?
It's not turfed.
Okay, so caveat, a turfed active field in Snohomish County. I'm last, I'm just gonna say what I want and not hold the two. Skate park, dog park and some sort of public-private partnership on Wayne so that we can, it can help pay for the maintenance and operations there. Are there more questions? Oh, I forgot you. I'm so sorry.
I guess I would just echo everything. I would say, for me, probably the most important thing is the public-private partnerships and finding a way to be able to do more with the money that we do have with those partnerships. I echo everything everybody says here about Snohomish County, finding active space for our residents, community in the north end of our community is important. I would also say my second, obviously, everybody knows my passion about Wayne, but my second would be to find a community center, someplace we could put a community center where people can gather, especially our teens, youth, skate parks, all those things rolled up into one special place, which possibly could be Wayne or some other park that we have here locally. But I think those would be, having that available to our community, I think, would be, would be important, so.
And yes, there's one more question.
Thank you.
Actually, it's two questions, one slide. So, again, recognizing that there might be a lot of wants from the community and limited resources, where do you think the city and particularly Parks and Rec staff should focus their energy? You know, and a different way to think about it is, you know, what could Parks and Rec be doing more of, less of differently in terms of the services offered and the services provided to the community?
Who wants to go first? Councilmember Agnew.
Yeah, I think a lot of these answers are gonna be defined by the answers you get in all your surveys. That'll give us a lot of the demographics. That'll tell us who's using the parks, how often they're using the parks. Do we need to go to more active space? Do we need more trails? I mean, it's gonna tell you a lot. I walk every day almost on the trail and I see some of the same people there every day and they're young, they're old, they're, you know, they're out walking their dog, they're out walking their kids. You know, if we could get some of that information, that would really help us out. Who's using these things and what are the demographics around it to where who is going to be using these parks in the future?
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I would echo and agree with everything Councilmember Agnew just said. I would say I would like to ensure that we look to the future as well, how our city's gonna look in the future and ensuring that the amenities that we have within our community will service the community how it looks in 2026 and beyond. You know, we're planning for 2050 right now regionally, so we should be planning our park systems for 2050 as well. To the second piece, what do I think, what could Parks and Rec be doing more or less of differently? Again, I go back to the public-private partnerships and what we can do with the money that we have. Maybe we can do more by having those partnerships. I think, I think we can leverage those because there's a lot of community groups, there's a lot of youth groups in the area that are using the fields that we currently have and they may be able to help. So, just maybe a little bit more of that, so.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
You had your hand on the button, so I went with you first.
All right. Thank you. So, I think I'm gonna try and be a little bit more specific because we need to take the four acres that is on Wayne and make some kind of a partnership so that we have an income that can help support the maintenance of Wayne. So, that's a really high point for me is to make sure that we get moving on that so because otherwise, the cost of maintaining Wayne is very difficult for us. People love that. I'll tell you that my neighbors and my friends and people that go there are just so impressed how beautiful it is. So, we want to keep it that way for them. So, we need some kind of public-private partnership or something on that four acres to get us some dollars to maintain it. And also, I spoke to David Bain earlier about opportunities for us to receive grants or from Forterra or for different groups that will help us to do, to raise dollars and grants for our Parks and Rec. And I think we have to think really seriously about those partnerships and how we can raise those dollars because other than our budget, that's the only other way we're gonna be able to do what we need to do.
Councilmember Zorn's.
This is a tough question for me to answer because I think that we have a phenomenal Parks Department and what we've been seeing you guys do of late has been very, very encouraging. And I know a lot of it gets bounced against our very common sense city manager on what's doable and what's not doable. But, you know, you, what I see you executing is what they've been talking about is looking for partnerships like Main Street and getting that planted. So, I'm not gonna give you any constructive criticism. I, you know, I echo what they're saying. I think you're already on that and I just am looking forward to see what more you generate. If you're at a loss for ideas, I would be really surprised because you've got some great ideas that are coming out right now. So, that's my comment.
Lots of great topics and suggestions so far and on the vein of partnerships, just thinking about, you know, that we have the volunteer coordinator now, seeing if that we can really utilize some of the energy that we're seeing in the community and, you know, leave the challenging tasks or the professional tasks to our, you know, great park staff, but where there's just, you know, where extra horsepower could, you know, make a big difference, you know, use, you know, the community that we have and, you know, just, you know, do more with less, you know. So, back to you.
Back to me. I agree with pretty much everything everyone said, so I'm just gonna go out on a limb and say two totally different things. I feel like there is not a lot for teenagers. I really feel like, I'm biased because I have to, but I just don't feel like they have a place. And I think that is really important, whether it's a skate park or whatever. You know, when we were talking with the youth about a youth council, there was a lot of discussion that they just don't have a place to go. Like, they go outside of our city and they go to the beach in Waynita or wherever and they feel like they don't have a place. And I think, you know, gosh, if they want a place that's gonna get them off their phones, we need to provide that for them. And then the second thing I would say is along the lines of volunteering, given where we are with Orca, the Orca's not getting enough food, I think, I know there are lots of grants available to do habitat restoration on Wayne and I think the sooner the better. And so, those would be my two.
Well, that's great feedback. I don't know, Tracy, do you wanna add anything or ask other questions because that was the last one of mine?
No, thank you. This has been helpful for us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We're really excited to engage in this process and keep going, so appreciate all of your hard work. Okay, moving on. AB 19-098, study session on proposed critical area regulation amendments. Oh, Mr. Boyd.
Tonight, I am bringing to you the Planning Commission recommendations for the 2019 Critical Areas, Critical Area Regulation Amendments. The background, this was initiated by City Council in, first in 2018 to address three points, FEMA floodplain management guidelines, recent ecology wetlands rating system changes and clarification of our regulations for streams. And we didn't get to it in 2018 and with the 2019 docket, we added coordination with the shoreline management program update. We, our Planning Commission is proposing to defer a couple of items. We, in the course of this, of our work, we learned that there's new floodplain guidance coming from ecology and, but it isn't expected until the end of 2019. Similarly, FEMA is updating their guidance on floodplains, so that on floodplains, so that made sense to push, to defer till 2018. Also, in the process of doing our code amendments, we got comments from ecology that our wetland buffers are substandard in their estimation, and that the best available science basis for our buffers is out of date. The 2018 docket didn't include a full review of our wetland buffers, and certainly didn't include budget for, to do a best available science review of that, because that would require consultant services. So, those are two items that we weren't able to tackle with this 2019 update. So, the planning, just to summarize the Planning Commission discussion and the recommendations, it included a comparison to other wetland buffers, both with our own shoreline management program buffers and those of other jurisdictions. And if council is interested, I do have a slide at the end that we can review those. They've added just the phrase "including stream" to the title of Article 15. Right now, it refers to habitat areas, and very frequently, we get inquiries at the counter. People just, they want to know what the stream buffers are, and they're looking through the code, and there's no heading in the whole code that includes the word "stream." So, I think that would just help a lot to make the code more readable. Also, related to streams, the code defines both streams and watercourses. Right now, it gives a detailed description for waterfront, watercourses for streams. It refers to the watercourse definition, but the code only uses the term "watercourse" once and typically uses the term "stream." So, just to avoid sending people on a wild goose chase through the code, we've flipped those and made "stream" the primary definition. Planning Commission, it wasn't a required update, but they questioned a provision in the code which was established when this was, when our critical areas regulations were first done, that referenced the qualifications for professionals to do a critical areas report. At the time, that was a fairly new area, and so we didn't require certification, but had an alternate qualification for someone who had been working in the field for a certain period of time. They didn't feel that that was necessary any longer, so they've removed that. We did look at the shoreline board's recommendation for off-site mitigation, particularly Fee and Lou, that we've discussed. And I've discussed that, when I brought the shoreline master program forward, that the Planning Commission took a little, a different tact, primarily because outside of the shoreline jurisdiction, there are, there's a greater possibility of encountering lower-quality wetlands, and wetlands that really do render properties largely undevelopable without doing some off-site mitigation. So, they thought it was appropriate to take a little different approach, or quite a different approach from the shoreline board, and provide a little more flexibility there. It still is the last option. We still do require, first, to avoid impacts, to minimize impacts, and to mitigate any impacts onsite. It's always the first possibility. But Planning Commission thought it was appropriate, in this different environment, away from the shoreline, to allow a little more flexibility, which would also potentially allow off-site mitigation from sites outside of the shoreline jurisdiction to sites in the shoreline jurisdiction over time. And as part of that, that was a change, the code currently references Bothell-sponsored Fee and Lou programs. Bothell does not have a, does not sponsor a Fee and Lou program, and it's unlikely that we will. King County has worked, has done a lot of work with the state and federal regulators to establish a Fee and Lou program. So, we're, Planning Commission is suggesting changing that terminology to Bothell-approved, so that would allow us to utilize that, again, in the relatively rare situation where we would be allowing a developer to use a Fee and Lou program as opposed to onsite/offsite mitigation. Oh, did want to point out that the Planning Commission did, they liked the diagram that the shoreline board, that our consultants with the shoreline board came up for the priorities of, for mitigation, and are incorporating that into the, into their code, because the priorities remain the same. And then, I included in your packet the Planning Commission findings, which include the description of the process and the amendments, and the comprehensive plan basis for those amendments. I won't go into that now, but it does also include a recommendation to initiate and allocate funds for a more extensive best available science review of the wetland buffers. And that's one of the areas of direction that we are looking from the council for, or that we're asking the council to, to inform the city manager if that's an approach you would like to take. So, with that, I'll open that up for questions. The next steps, we are scheduled for a public hearing on July 2nd, and the July 2nd packet will include an ordinance ready for adoption, basically taking the Planning Commission's recommendations and putting that in ordinance form. So, any questions?
Thanks, Dave. Can you, can you go back over what you'd like to action on, you want us to give the city manager recommendation initiative?
That is on the Planning Commission recommendation. We deferred, well, we got input from ecology that in their, that our standards are substantially less than their recommended, their, I'm sorry, our buffers, wetland buffers are substantially less than their recommended buffers. Many communities do, through a best available science review and an acknowledgement of the, of the more urban nature of their, their territory from, say, unincorporated areas of the counties, do adopt different wetland buffers than ecology's recommendation. But to do that, we would really need to do some detailed analysis of what would be the impact of those buffers on our buildable areas analysis, and then if we need to adjust them, what is the best available science currently that would justify those buffers? So, so the, but to do that is going to require a consultant, some consultant services to help with that. And so, that's the area that we would like.
Do we have a ballpark of how much that would cost? And does it include streams too, or is it, are we just talking wetland buffers?
The, the issue that came up in this review was the wetland buffers, but we would probably be also looking at streams, at least to some degree, if we were, if we were getting into that, that issue.
So, you're thinking tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands?
I think a hundred thousand would be a ballpark figure, but we haven't really, I guess the first step would be to direct staff to, to do some scoping and some costing, and to come back to you.
Okay. Are there questions in council? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. So, these wetland buffers, the language is pretty stark, not consistent with best available science on buffer widths, and inadequate. So, I guess I'm wondering, haven't other cities done best available science, and does it really change from city to city? It concerns me when you talk about how, what the, what the impact would be on buildable lands, because that's, that's not best available science, right? That's something completely different. So, it seems like we should be able to come up with some number that's better than inadequate.
Yes. And we've, we did a best available science review of our buffers, and they were established through a best available science review in 2005. And what ecology is saying now is that, that those, those references are dated, and they think we either need to adopt their buffers, which would have a significant impact on our, our buildable lands, and which is another, another requirement that we have to meet certain growth targets through our buildable lands analysis. And so, we think the appropriate thing would be to, to do, update our best available science review based on the conditions here in Bothell, and establish either reconfirm those buffers through that review, or make modifications as necessary.
I guess what I'm saying is, we know that what we have is inadequate. We know what ecology would like, and there are other cities that I assume have done best available science. And I'm wondering if staff could look at those, and we could come up with some incremental change until we do best available science.
This is the, the analysis we've done to date. So, we have the Bothells, critical areas, regulations in the upper right, our shoreline master program regulations, where we do, you go with buffers that are more similar to the ecology recommendations. Kirkland does go pretty much with the ecology recommendations, but they have fewer wetland areas than Bothell does. The city of Kenmore combined their wetland regulations in their shoreline master program and critical areas, well, code, and they have buffers that are slightly larger than ours, but again, significantly less than, than those by, recommended by ecology. So, ecology isn't saying that we have to adopt their, their recommended buffers, but if we don't, we should, we should do some analysis to justify reduction.
I guess I'm just looking at it as, we know they're not adequate. We know it'll cost $100,000 to get a study. How much, when we talk about buildable lands, it's not the same as talking about best available science. So, to me, I mean, it's my point of view. I know you think differently, but I don't, I'd like to see us come up with a number that's better than inadequate before we do a best available science, if that's possible. That's just my personal preference. Thanks.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
So, somehow, do we know what it costs Kenmore to do what they did?
I haven't looked into that.
I, I'm thinking that we have to do some kind of a comparison in cost that says, if we do the best available science, what's that going to cost us? Or, if we adopt the ecology recommendations, you know, where will we be, and what will that cost us? Or do we combine it and do a little bit of this and that? I just think $100,000 is like a little bit over the top for me. So, I want to know, what did Kenmore do, and what did it cost them? And maybe we could kind of learn from them, correct? They're closer to the critical area regulations than Kirkland. They're closer to us. Is that correct, don't you think, wouldn't you say?
Yes.
So, yeah, I want to know what they did, and how that, and how much the cost was for them.
I have a question. Councilmember Orange.
Well, I appreciate you bringing Kenmore up into the discussion, because they, climate-wise, have a lot more in common with us, being part of the convergent zone than, say, Kirkland does in comparison, and how they, they manage rainfall, significant rainfall, I would guess pretty, pretty similarly to Bothell. I did have a question, and it's probably more of a clarification question, and does it wait till Department of Ecology weighs in? As I noticed on page 209 of our agenda packet, when we comment about category four wetlands, and I'm quoting, "These wetlands should be able to be replaced, and in some cases, be able to be improved. However, experience has shown that replacement cannot be guaranteed in any specific case," which tells me replacement is a, is, is not an effective given, which now I bump up to page 217 of the agenda packet, and you have blocked out, "Ecology recommends a 40-foot buffer width for category four wetlands, which could be reduced to 30 feet." Planning Commission can make this change now, or wait for a more comprehensive review of buffers can be done in the future. Is that going to be part of what Department of Ecology weighs in? Based on the comment of, can you rehabilitate and improve a category four, I'm thinking that 40-foot buffer makes a lot of sense. What don't I understand, or what ought I understand more about category four and doing a reduced buffer on it?
The, the ecology recommended buffers for most category wetlands are larger than ours. For category fours, they're actually smaller. So, that note was just, that was part of the Planning Commission discussion, was, given that we could go down to, from 50 feet currently to, to 40 feet for category four wetlands, is, should we, should we, could we cherry pick and pick the reduced buffer where we want and, and keep the other buffers? And the decision was that, no, we, we don't really know, since, until we do the best available science review, we really don't know if our buffers truly are inadequate. They're less than the ecology recommendation. But until we do that, we shouldn't be cherry picking which, which buffer widths we want. We should stick with what we've got, what was, what was done under the last best available science review, until we're able to do a renewed best available science review.
Okay, I think, I think I'm tracking you. I saw in the packet comments about having narrower setbacks in some contexts, when wider setbacks in other contexts. It almost sounded like you, for a piece of property, they could almost do an averaging or approximation of an averaging of their setbacks, where they could move in closer and setback further in other areas. Is that part of where the category four would fall into?
Most wetland buffer codes do allow some, some averaging within a site, within certain parameters. So, that is, that is allowed in our code and in most others.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Agnew?
That's okay. I agree with Deputy Mayor. I think we need to take a look at this. We need to look at some of the cities around us, and we need to make a compromise, because ecology is somebody that I'm not willing to get in a fight with. I'm not sure how they're going to play the game, but I think we can take a look at what's going on around us, make changes to our plan, and probably not spend the $100,000.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor. Dave, thank you for the presentation. So, I'd agree with the financial piece of it for the $100,000. I do have a question, however. It appears on the top left, the category four that you were referring to earlier is 40 standard feet. And then, if I go to the proposed car on the right, it's 50 feet, if I'm reading that, 75 to 50 feet, if I'm reading it correctly. But then, if I go down to Kirkland, it's 40 feet. And then, if I go to Kenmore, it's 40 feet. Am I understanding that we're going, depending on the condition on the upper left, it will be 40 feet, but if we're in the condition on the right, it will be 50 to 75 feet?
It'll be 50 with the possibility of reducing it to 37.5. So, that is the one area where our, our existing regs are actually, have a wider buffer than the, the recommendation.
Okay. And then, when it starts, where it starts to narrow is when you get into the category two, one and two, is that correct?
One, two, and three, yeah.
Yeah, it seems like it's, okay. As far as the comparison, I would be for, my support would be As far as the comparison, I would be for, my support would be for comparing us to cities that have the same type of tributaries that we do, especially to the Smamish River. And I don't know if that's just Kenmore, or if that's Woodinville, or if it's Mill Creek. I don't know where, how we would study that, but I would be interested to see what the long-term impacts will be, because when we talk about development and what it takes away from us with the buffers and things like that, we also must understand what development near or in those buffers is going to do to those tributaries. So obviously, money is an issue, but we do need to make sure that we make the right decisions here. So, thank you, Dave.
Councilmember Olson.
Do you know when the Kenmore study was performed?
There, when I took these, it was in process. So they're working to complete their shoreline master program update in the same timeframe that we are.
Because, yeah, I think, you know, there's lots of similar comments out there as looking to similar cities with similar topography and tributaries. And it seems like, yeah, we, it doesn't seem like we need to reinvent the wheel on a lot of this. But I'm definitely not an expert on this, but it seems like there is areas that we can collaborate with nearby cities and, you know, use some sound engineering judgment and, you know, go with what similar cities are going with as well, you know, and balance it between the Department of Ecology's recommendations and with what everyone else is finding with their best available science studies. So, yeah, so I think everyone's made some great comments out here as well.
Then you get me. Dave, can we use stormwater utility money to do a best available science study on streams?
That, I don't know off the top of my head if we, if that's...
We'd have to look into it. I don't know. I don't want to say yes or no because I'm not sure.
I know other cities have. I just didn't know where we're at with that. I do know with the Department of Ecology, if you don't go with their recommendations, they're going to say, "Why?". And so, I guess taking a step back, I would like to, like the majority of the council, I think, just said, look at our buffers and increase them, look at what's best for our streams as well as our built environment. I agree with you, Dave, that that's, you can't do one without the other. I mean, if you, if we do that and we get out of alignment with the Growth Management Act, then we now just switched one state regulation and are messing up the other one. So if we can use stormwater funds, I think doing a best available science study, I think, would make sense. $100,000 probably isn't that big of a deal, the stormwater utility. And just try to, just so we have some information in front of us, so we're making an educated guess instead of seeing what the neighbors are doing. I would feel more comfortable with that, and especially going to ecology. The ecology reviews our critical areas regulations or just the SMP? I don't remember.
Ecology approves our SMP regulations. They review our critical area regulations, but they don't have approval authority. So they, you're right. They will give their advice on it, but they can't say, "No, we won't allow this."
Okay, because they can't.
Yeah.
But they'll write a save strongly worded letter if we don't meet their expectations, I would assume.
Yes, and which is why, why the recommendation to do the study and that we can have a solid basis for the regulations that we do eventually adopt.
And so this is proposed to come back on July 2nd, is that what you said, for approval?
Yes.
Okay. And that's probably not enough time to scope out what it would cost to do a study? And if the stormwater utility could fund it? Because in general fund, I don't think, we don't have $100,000 laying around, I don't think.
It's always council discretion. I mean, it's...
We don't like the bad word, though, the reserve.
That's, that's the other option. If the stormwater fund can't fund it, then it's the general fund reserve, but we'll certainly look into the stormwater.
Okay. So I'd be in support of that. I'd be in support of passing these two with that, well, that'd obviously be a separate thing, but to have that come back and execute a study, see, I mean, maybe if, so a lot of the council thought that, we don't necessarily need that, maybe get some information to come back and say, "Well, this is, it's okay just to copy the neighbors or is it not okay"? Probably checking with ecology. Or you basically said you already did that, right?
Well, we've had discussions with ecology, and I think they would agree that doing, that we need to update our best available, we have references in our code to the best available sciences, science review that was done in 2005 that they, that they say are inadequate right now. So there was some discussion about, you know, sort of piggyback, Kenmore's using the same consultants we use for our shoreline master program update. There was some discussion about whether we could sort of piggyback on their recommendations, but the decision was that we really did need to do our own analysis. And we are going to have to come back in 2020 to address the flooding issues that we're expecting guidance toward the end of this year on. So that, I think that was the thinking, that since we need to do that anyway, deferring this update on the wetland buffers to 2020 and giving ourselves the time to do the study made sense.
Okay, just, if the stormwater utility can cover the cost, would you guys be more interested in doing the study? Are you still thumbs down on that? I got one, yeah, and two, yeah. Rosemary's a no. Deputy, sort of, okay. All right, there goes the majority. Look at it from a stormwater utility funding standpoint.
So are you comfortable with us moving forward on July 2nd with the recommendations that are provided before you? And then we could also bring back some options for moving forward to do a more enhanced update? Because I think these need to be adopted, right? Isn't that sort of the first step? And then we could look at...
There isn't a hard deadline as, like there is with the shoreline master program update, but this already was extended in from 2018 into 2019. The reason to do this wasn't because ecology said our wetland buffers were inadequate, just that as we did the updates to adjust the buffers for the new habitat score, you know, per ecology guidelines, they said, "Well, that's, this is all good, but we're concerned about this." So that's how this, how we got to this point, basically.
So are we okay as a council to have this come back on July 2nd?
So we could basically bring it back, adopt this, have you consider adoption of this, and then along in that same report, we could provide you with sort of next steps. We could reassess if there's some internal work we could do to make another incremental step. But again, one of the things we're trying to balance is the full 2019 docket that you already approved, and we used all of the staff time on all the projects that you approved as part of that docket. So we'd either need to pull something off that docket, but if you're looking for maybe not the full best practices, then maybe there's something incrementally the next step above. But we need some time to do that analysis. But we could provide that for you in the July 2nd report.
Could we kick that over to the Public Works Department? She's not here. We totally can't.
For what?
Well, I was just thinking, if Public Works had the capabilities and the availability, if it was their funding and their people...
I don't know. We'll have to, everybody's plate's pretty packed full, so we'll have to take a look and see who's available to do what, if at all. And chances are, we're not going to have the expertise on staff. We're going to need some help, but that's what we would assess over the next, well, it's pretty short. Well, hopefully by July 2nd, we could at least get some outline of some options for you.
That'd be great.
We did, we have already advertised the public hearing on the 2nd, so at the minimum, we need to open that and continue it if necessary, but I think we can address some of these questions about the stormwater money and, and kind of lay out the path, options for path going forward.
So is everybody okay with this coming back July 2nd? Yeah, yeah, okay. That gets you everything you needed? Okay. So now we need to do, did you want to do it right now or do you want to do the council conversation? You want us to do it right now, don't you?
I kind of do.
Okay.
So I request that someone on council make a motion to amend tonight's agenda in two respects. First, to add an executive session under RCW 4320-1101I for potential and actual litigation. It should only take about five minutes. It really is quite brief. And secondly, to add a new business agenda item number AB19-099 regarding a settlement agreement regarding the litigation associated with Lot P South. And that also should take approximately five minutes.
And that's an exec?
It'd be after exec, and it would be an action item. And this is something that we, we discussed this topic in executive session last week, but I do want to remind council and executive session of some of the potential litigation and actual litigation associated with this before we discuss it publicly.
There you go. Deputy Mayor.
I move we add an executive session pursuant to RCW 4320-110.1I for five minutes and then a new business item 19-099 on a settlement agreement.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Zorn's. I won't repeat it because I didn't write it down because my pen died. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Aye opposed, passes unanimously. And then just out of curiosity, does anybody want to have council conversations or do we want to just do, okay, so we're going to do that later? All right, so we're going to go to executive session at 7:40. We'll be back at, what, how long? You said 10 minutes?
7:50, shouldn't even be that much. I promise, it's not, it's really short.
All right, we'll be back at 7:55. I will be back at seven fifty-five. I will be back at seven fifty-five. I will be back at seven fifty-five.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as everyone is well aware, the city was sued by an entity known as Bothell Investment Partners. They also named the North School, North Shore School District as a defendant regarding contamination on Lot P South. The city entered into mediation negotiations with them on May twenty-ninth. We were in downtown, at a downtown law firm for the majority of the day. And at the end of that day, the all parties came to an agreement to resolve the litigation. That includes a payment of some of the costs incurred by Bothell Investment Partners and an agreement to further remediate the contamination on Lot P South, which the city has agreed to do in good faith. And so even though we reached that agreement in good faith, part of the process is for, is for council to approve that settlement and that's what we're asking for tonight.
Okay, and just so the public is interested, this, this agenda item will be posted on the website under our, tonight's agenda.
That's correct. That was an oversight on my part. We were very excited to have this litigation behind us so we could move forward with the cleanup and it simply, and we were intending to have it on. Yeah.
Okay.
We were intending to have it on tonight. I simply, it was a, I just spaced it off. I apologize to you and to the public. But the agenda bill and the settlement agreement is a public document and available for public viewing if anyone so requested.
Okay. Is there a motion? Deputy Mayor?
I move council approve the settlement agreement that was negotiated by all parties in good faith during mediation.
Second.
It's moved by the Deputy Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Agnew to approve the settlement agreement that was negotiated by all parties in good faith during mediation. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, if you, alright, raise your hand and say aye. Aye, opposed, passes unanimously. Got that? Okay. Poor Laura's sick. Okay, so last item on our agenda is the council conversations and Councilmember Zornz, you have the floor.
I know, I, I'm apologizing now. Humbly, contritely apologizing. And I'm gonna hog the floor for a little bit and then we can throw it out there and talk about it. One is, I would like, and it's coming with a huge caveat for some. I would like to propose, since Olympia did not carry through with it, that we put a ban on plastic grocery bags and other similar bags that aren't necessarily, necessary for selling product. I'm old enough that I pitched a fit when grocery stores started moving to plastic bags. And the argument that I got endlessly was, plastic is renewable. And my reaction, my big fat Irish mouth said, but Doug, gun it, paper's renewable. Plastic's harder. And so now here we are, thirty-some-odd years later, saying, plastic, plastic isn't as renewable as we thought it was. So, I hate plastic bags. I especially hate produce bags. And, and I would love, I don't think we can mandate, I would love a thicker, I understand needing produce bags for, like meats, for health. Because you don't want to be throwing things that would be carrying, things that are dangerous for public health, just in with your regular produce and stuff. So I understand that. I would love to see a thicker mill plastic being required for that. Because the film on those plastic bags right now is wispy, can get airborne so easily. And you could re, repurpose those bags. For produce bags, I'm a new fan of these. And I would, you know, I would love to see people start using these. These are cotton. When you're done with them, you can throw them in the landfill. They'll, they'll rot. You can wash your produce in them. They're, they're awesome. So I would love to see people start using that. They're, they're awesome. I tell you, I go through QFC, you could, there's a little tag on there where you can take the, peel the produce tag off and put it on the outside tag. They can just scan that and they're like, these are awesome. Yeah.
So, I asked about this at the last council goal setting. And it's already on the docket, right?
Okay, so, is it on the docket?
Yes, it is.
Okay, well, so now we're gonna get to my caveat and I will just tell you now, I'm glad it's on the docket. Is that I made a promise to constituents when I was out doorbelling. I'm glad it's on the docket. As much as I hate plastic bags, I do not want to see, and we'll, we will have this discussion when it comes around on the docket, is I do not like charging. If Olympia wants to be heavy-handed and put that on the public, it's on them. But I did a little informal survey. And people told me, yeah, I would pay, I, I have those, these bags, these plastic bags. I have twenty of them in my car and I never use them. Because I forget to use them and it's no big deal for me to spend five, ten cents on paper bags. Who it is a big deal to, though, are people who have tight budgets. And when I was out doorbelling, I had, I had people say, do not, do not ban plastic bags. I do not want to spend five, ten cents. I'm being nickel and dimed. And we can say, yeah, people with EBT cards can use them, can get free bags. But there's a lot of people on tight budgets who would not qualify for that. So I'll just put that out there when we get down to that conversation. I don't want to blow this out of the water, but I'm just kind of letting you know that if there is squid room for you on this, I really want to ban plastic bags.
And I just have to say, I was sent, I think, five hundred signatures. So I have, I have signatures that were collected. I think, within Bothell, of Bothell residents. So, we have a, we have a constituency that really wants them banned. But I think we're also doing single-use plastic, or at least looking at single-use plastic too. Am I correct, City Manager? Yeah. Can I ask, where did you, where do you get those bags?
I got those on Amazon and I've.
Because I assume you can reuse them. You just throw them in the wash and reuse them?
I throw them in the wash all the time, yeah. And last, they had them like for half price. So, you know, I bought my mother a set, myself a couple sets. They're, they're pretty awesome. So if you would like to sell those at our Bothell Friday Market, we'd love it. Oh, my goodness. You know, you know, that would be great for someone who did, who, who was really crafty and had the time. They get. No, I, no, I, Lord have mercy, no. I, I just barely finished a set of baby stockings for my grandson right before his feet outgrew them. So, yeah, no, the chances of me doing that and getting that done are. Yeah.
Just to remind everybody, use your, your button when you're talking so that people can hear us on the TV and stuff. And it's recorded. Any other council discussions? Councilmember McNeil, Councilmember McCullough?
Thank you. So I just want to talk to you a little bit about the scholarship bill that passed in the legislature. It started out to include five cities and at the end of the day, it included all of municipalities. So any city can apply. So what this does is it's a workforce education investment bill. It's Washington State Opportunity Scholarship Program. It provides scholarships to low-income and middle-income students who are residents of your city, so of Bothell, say. So pursuing, who are pursuing professional and technical degrees in the high-demand majors of STEM and healthcare. It's a public-private partnership with the state. So if we invested, say we took dollars from our human service account and invested two thousand dollars, we would get a match from the state of two thousand dollars. We could grow our own young people into the STEM fields and the high-demand fields and they would receive a scholarship from Bothell. So what I'm asking is for our human service committee, and I know that there's a group kind of doing some recommendations right now that are kind of making some, gonna bring to us some decisions about what we could do with human service dollars. But I'd like to include this scholarship program in that discussion. Because I think I'd like to grow my own.
So who's on the, can you give us an update on where, or Councilmember McCullough, an update on where we're at with the human services?
Staff is coming back to us with recommendations. We had talked about actually spending human services money to do a human services navigator. So spending money to have someone in City Hall direct people to services. And so I think that's what Councilmember McCullough was talking about. So we, we allocated twenty nineteen dollars. We haven't allocated twenty twenty because we knew we were reviewing kind of how we wanted this program to work. And, and we're having trouble getting, I guess, feedback on what our money was actually accomplishing. And so I don't know where staff is because it was Assistant City Manager Brazidis that was doing that. So I'm not sure where we're at with the, moving forward.
Actually, the grants manager, Tracy Prokoski, has been helping us because she's so exceptional at grants. And she's been working with Catherine Jensen and Assistant City Manager Mizoli will be engaging in that, in that as well. And we're looking at the options and we had said we'd come back to you in September with some options for better understanding how we're reporting, how we're getting information, how we're servicing Bothell residents, and then be able to provide the subcommittee with some options. So if, if there's direction from the council, we can certainly include this as another area for council to consider.
And that is what I would request the council to consider.
Is all the money allocated at this point?
You've allocated for two thousand nineteen. You have twenty twenty left, which is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Wow.
You allocated three.
And you just need two grand to do? I'd be supportive of that.
Well, I, I mean, I guess I would just say for process, I think the human services committee should discuss it and then council, yeah. And then council can weigh in.
Yeah, that is what I'm asking, just that the staff consider this scholarship program as well and bring recommendations.
Can I, can I ask a quick clarifying question?
Yes.
You said public-private. Is, is it public-public? You know, are public funds matching? Are local public funds are going to be matched by state public funds?
By the state, yes.
Can we bring also private funds in that will also be matched by the state? That's public municipalities that are matched by?
No. Currently, the Washington Scholarship Opportunity Program has a public-private partnership. So corporations and businesses can do this currently. This included municipalities. So that's when we can come in as a city.
Great, thank you.
And the kid, the kids would know it came from us?
They would be our Bothell students. It's a resident of your city.
Right, but they'd know like, they just got a scholarship and that was backed by the city of Bothell?
Absolutely.
Can I ask another question? Is it, is it, you're dependent in school, so could like a sophomore and who's in school apply for a scholarship? Or do you have to be an incoming freshman?
You know what, I'd have to investigate that a little further. Because I know when they do scholarships, they want to be sure that that student is going to continue. And, and so sometimes they put more dollars into later years and less dollars in the earlier years.
Well, and it's harder to find scholarships for students who are further, further, the number of them that are available seems to be difficult. So if we could help out, that would be awesome.
It would be good and I will get back to you with that.
Okay, thanks.
I have one more, if I may. So I did send the mayor and the city manager a request that we recognize the city of Bothell, our staff, and also the business people on Main Street for doing a partnership to actually create the flower program that they have, large planter boxes with the trees between a hundred first and a hundred second. And I'd like to bring them to a council meeting and thank them for a partnership that really created a beautiful downtown. So my request.
Is that a request for like a, for the proclamation? Is that what you're thinking? On this line, it's okay, cool.
I let, I let the council member know that we would look at trying to schedule that.
Okay. Any other conversation? There we go. Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of brief ones. One is, I would like to invite all of my fellow council members to come join me July twentieth down in Renton for the African-American Men Wellness Walk. Doesn't matter if you're a grown man or if you're a woman, a child. Love to see you guys down there supporting the health and well-being of, of men. This past week, I lost one of my dear friends that I grew up with. It's hard to imagine, you know, men my age, fifty-three years old, passing away at this young age. But we all do need to get checkups and that's not just African men, that's all men in general, women as well, children. So this is just raising awareness on how we can do that. The second one is a more positive note. This past weekend, had the opportunity to have a gathering, a barbecue at the Wayne Golf Course. And I can tell you, seeing not only the, the amount of families that we had out for the barbecue for lacrosse, but all the people enjoying the Wayne Golf Course, it is a special place. And that special place, I'd like to see if there's support. And that special place, I'd like to see if there's support on this council to put a plaque out on that golf course, or former golf course park, for the people of the community to recognize all the hard work that the community put in, and the stewards that actually helped to make it happen, including the city of Bothell, King County, the state, et cetera. So I briefly asked about the plaque on the building here and other parks, but I'm not sure the process, but I'd love to see a plaque out there dedicated to, to all the people that, that put all the time in to actually make that happen for our community, so.
Is that sign still out there from the first, when the first, is that NGP, you know, it's a, the, the front line? It has a plaque on it that's from.
Conservation?
King County Conservation East.
Conservation sign is, is, the smaller one is still there. The other one was, I think, believed hit by a car or something, yeah.
Car got to that? Wow. That's, that's an interesting. It's hard to take those sometimes, I guess.
I think it's a great idea. The only question I had was, it doesn't have a name yet, so.
Oh, God, don't open that can of worms again.
I think just, name aside, I think just the fact that we, the community, all together made this happen. It's, it was a, I can't explain the amount of effort that was put in, not only by, you know, the council, the city manager, everybody who's, who made this happen, the community groups that came together. It is one of those things that, I can tell you when you're out there and you're enjoying it, whether it be the snow, when the kids were sledding, or just out for a barbecue, it doesn't, doesn't matter. Just there's hundreds of people out there walking. You know, we unfortunately, because of the, the snowstorm, had to cut the trees down in the back. But I can tell you, there's hundreds of people still walking through the back and enjoying it. And it's, it's amazing to see what it actually is becoming as a park. And it, to me, it's a regional park. I mean, it's, everybody knows about it. So it'd be cool to have something out there as a statement of who and when this actually, how it happened, so.
So, question, James. So, because I think a plaque is a great idea, but that almost, in my mind, implies on a structure somewhere. And we're, that's a little premature. But could we put up a current sign that just celebrates Wayne Golf Course and the community that brought it thus far, and we're eager to see where it's going? I mean, could we generate something like that?
So I know, just real quick, I know there's rules about signs in parks and stuff, so we're going to need.
Okay.
Sorry to be the bureaucrat, but there are rules in which we have to follow, so we should. We just change the rules and put our sign up, but we actually could do that. But like, I don't know if we really want to do that. So it'd probably be helpful, so, well, I don't know. I bet we could just look it up in the code ourselves, too.
But I, but I will say that I really support the idea. I think that people ought to know how this all came to be. And I will tell you that when we first got the first million dollars from the Washington State Senate, we called it Wayne Land. Because we didn't put money into golf courses. The state didn't. So that's why we named it Wayne Land, just in case you want to name.
So that's in the code, too? I'm the bureaucrat. Naming the park is actually, yeah, it's in the municipal code, so.
Well, I just, I just want to say, to me, it's not something we have to do tomorrow. I just thought it would be really great to have something there. I know we have an informational board up. Just maybe something in there, just a piece of paper, it doesn't matter. Just telling the community, "Thank you." Just when we walk up to that board, seeing that would be special. I know I was sitting in that park this weekend, and people were asking me and thanking me, and, and I'm like, "This wasn't me. This was our community," right, that made this happen. So just telling the history, telling the story. You know, 30 years ago, Larry Phillips and Louise Miller came together in King County, and they started the process. And we, in our lifetime, finished it. So to be able to have something that is in perpetuity out that park, whether it's today or tomorrow, just would be a special thing, so.
Agreed. All right, is there any other council conversations?
Actually, yes.
Uh-oh.
Sorry. So just something to think about, because you know how we had the lights out for conserving electricity? A constituent sent me an email, and he was, was talking about, for people who like to stargaze, that there's so much urban light and bleed-out here that it's hard to stargaze. And, and it's also hard on the, the flora and fauna. And we have some significant wooded sections now that we need to be mindful of, you know, making it comfortable for them as well. And, and it started me thinking, like, August is the Perseid meteor shower. I mean, we, the lunar eclipses usually sneak up on us, but the Perseid meteor shower is always a given. And could we start thinking about urban light at night and how we use it? Not this year, but like in, in a, in another year or two, talking about, as a city of Bothell, celebrating a night darkness. And what does that mean to us? And we could do it under the auspices of, this is as a community. It might be really hard without a lot of broadcasting. But could we do along the lines of, that we did for Lights Out? Lights Out and, and enjoy the nature. Step out on your deck and watch the meteor shower, and think about, you know, how we use our nightlight. It's just a thought to chew on. No, no decisions.
Any other council conversations? We good? Conversed? We're good. All right, is there a motion adjourned? Moved by Councilmember McNeil, sorry, I might have to give it to Councilmember McCullough, seconded by Councilmember McCullough. Discussion on the motion. All's favor, raise your hands, say aye. Aye, opposed, passes unanimously. We adjourn.